I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge of the flag, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its throne.
Welcome everyone to the June 6th meeting. We have the approval of the minutes of May 16th.
Lou?
No motion, but we have second. Any discussion on the minutes of May 16th? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills, we have motion through financial report. We have motion and second, any discussion on the financial report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, ordinance 6-2018 fiscal year 2019 budget. It is now presented for adoption. Lou, you want to talk about it a little bit as far as the, uh, make sure we follow the rules of our card?
Yes, the, uh, the budget was introduced at the meeting on the sixteenth, on 16th, May 16th when they had a public hearing. And is subject to adoption tonight, covers the period July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. Real property tax rate set at .6356 for $100 for actual property assessment. And the personal property taxes at 121 per $100 of personal property value. Order and slaughter rates will remain as they currently are. I would recommend that board adopt ordinance 6-2018 with launch our budget July 1st, 2019.
Do we have a motion to approve ordinance 6-2018? I have a motion, it's like any discussion on the budget. I just wanted to, uh, make the board aware there's a, uh, once again, it is a budget. And, uh, a little different, uh, that, uh, when we budget for things, doesn't mean we're going to spend everything that we budget for. Some things will be higher, some things will be lower. Uh, but the one, uh, part in there that, uh, we still have a little bit of a hiccup on is the state shared income tax. Uh, we had a discussion with the Comptroller's Office last week. We're in a address audit as we speak, hopefully. And, uh, with the Comptroller's Office and, uh, I believe that there's been a mistake. We felt, we feel as though, uh, they should be deducting us about $80,000 and based on last year's fiscal or the fiscal that we're currently in, I think we're tracking about $350,000, give or take dollars that, uh, we have not received. So, uh, we're going to get to the bottom of it, but we're not going to get to the bottom of it tonight. So, uh, I appreciate, uh, the motion and the second on this and we'll adjust the, uh, budget with amendment one way or the other once we get some clarity on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. All right, I'd like to invite Ms. Charlene No. Tarkola, the clerk of the court, to swear in the mayor. I'm going to break the camera, Louis. See if we can do this without these dumb ones on all the words. Oh, this is good, this would be good. Lou wants us in front of you.
So I can get the seal.
That's good.
I, Robert Al.
I, Robert Al.
Do swear or affirm?
Do swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of mayor.
Execute the office of mayor.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And the laws of this state.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We've got a few more years together. Okay. What, I guess, over here? Would like to have this ink pen for a thousand. How you doing? Good.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Now it gives me the great pleasure to swear in our two commissioners. So, one at a time here. Jean has a little runny nose tonight, so make sure you edit your photographs tonight.
Yeah, please, it's very unbecoming and uncomfortable, but we'll do this.
Don't get it on you, though.
I'd like you to raise your right hand, please. Repeat after me, please. I, Jean Abrumel.
I, Jean Abrumel.
Do swear that I will support.
Do swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of commissioner.
Execute the office of commissioner.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And the laws of this state.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Mary Jo, come on down. Mary Jo, you can raise your right hand for me, please. I, Mary Jo Jablonski.
I, Mary Jo Jablonski.
I do swear that I will.
I do swear that I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be.
And that I will be.
Faithful and bear true allegiance.
Faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of commissioner.
Execute the office of commissioner.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
Congratulations. Jean, you want to get a picture?
Yeah, I was going to say, can we do that?
Yeah, you want you line up.
With our family, or?
Let's have, let's have your family come up here and line up around here. And we'll have Mary Jo, uh, go ahead and wave there.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
You're welcome.
Not a big red.
Huh?
Being natural and big red.
I do want to introduce my family real quick. Uh, my husband John, my daughter Jamie, and her two children Avery and Luciana.
Mary Jo, get your camera out there.
Here, it's okay, we'll just hold you.
Next one.
I'm right here.
Deck one. Deck one.
Deck one, look at the camera. Look at the camera. Look at the door.
Can I have my lovely bride up here for once? Should we get my godmother up here with us? Come on! Come on, godmother! Now embarrassing, uh, for real.
Now, before the mayor says anything, I'd like to first of all congratulate, uh, all three of you.
Thank you.
Um, I, I just want to say, uh, it's been a pleasure, two years working with Jean. When we put her on board, we knew we had somebody special. Um, it's probably one of the best boards I've been on since I've been on, uh, this commission board, just want to say that. But, uh, regardless of what people say, I can actually say, I've seen it happen through the group. We've got a good group of people up here that care for the town and try to make decisions that's going to work, that's going to be best for the citizens of the town. Mary Jo Talep, besides keeping you active. Uh, I, I enjoy working with her because not just the good ideas that come up through the, the board is just coming together and voting on something, whether you agree or disagree, we can come to the decision that's what's best for the town. And then for the mayor, I've never really had anybody with leadership like he's had for the mayor, uh, council. But I really appreciate his, uh, support, his, uh, I don't know, ideas, he comes up with his ideas. And it just brings the group together with other ideas to come together and, and look forward to something better for the town of Elton. And on behalf of the town, the mayor's commissioners, I just want to say thank you for being a part of it.
Thank you.
I pretty much echo the same sentiments that Earl has. Uh, this is a great group to be working with. Robbie and I started together, he remembers, uh, many, many years ago. And we ended up in a three-way vote.
We did.
And we went inside and fortunately for me, the absentee vote got me over. And Robbie and Joe Fosso still ended in a tie, so they had to run again. And, uh, Robbie has been great for the town of Elton, he has really been great. I really believe in them and whatever needs to be done, you know, I'd be glad to work with them. And again, Jean, Robbie, and myself, we have reconnected because we worked together, when was it? Remember what the year was?
We came on in 1994.
1994. But it's been great, and then, um, Mary Jo, and she's been great for the town of Elton, she's been great, period. And then of course Earl, you never know which way he is. But it's been great. And let me not forget Louis Stewart, he's been great too, even though he does not have to be, uh, running for office, but it's been a great team. And, uh, Robbie, thank you so much, Jean, and Mary Jo.
Thank you.
Well, I do, I, I, I can't say enough how, how well we work together. And a lot of that too has to do with our staff and our department heads. Um, it's a remarkable group of people, I'm, I'm proud to be a part of that. And, um, I just want to thank everybody who did support me and has a little bit of faith in me. I think I can live up to that and do the best job that I can, so, thank you.
Um, I would just like to say, I agree with what everyone said, this is really the best board we have ever had. And we do work so well together and make those decisions that hopefully benefit all of you out there. And, um, I want to thank everyone who did support me, all my friends, family, and friends who have helped me along the way. Um, I'm just so happy you're here and you know who you are. Uh, but, and I want to thank Rob in particular here because we have a great mayor. We have a mayor with a lot of energy, a lot of ideas, um, and we all just feed from that. And I really appreciate everyone on this board and especially you, Rob, so thank you so much.
Thank you. And of course, I want to thank everyone that, uh, has been there to support us. I, I, I'd always like to say, there's not a book out there to tell you how to be a mayor or commissioner. If there was, it would make life easy. And we have some tough decisions out there and, uh, there's easy ones and then there's tough ones. And we find that, uh, not in every neighborhood, we're going to make everyone happy. And it's very, it's very disappointing for us up here that we can't do the best for everyone that we can at times. But there is, uh, rules and regulations that we have to be guided by, and we do our best. And, uh, I think that what's nice about this group is that we can all talk, we can discuss it, uh, we digest the information. And, uh, we may not always agree, but I can promise you one thing, we will be smiling when we leave here because we never take it personal. And, uh, I consider the, uh, four members up here not only colleagues, but very dear friends of mine. And, uh, long after we're, uh, sitting up here, I know that we will be friends. Thank you so much for your support. Thank you, staff, thank you all, and, uh, let's conduct some business. Okay, it is 7:19, we have a public hearing right now on the community development block grant application regarding the town of Elton neighborhood community center project. Uh, Jean?
I'll bring it up.
Jean, did you want to explain the grant?
I sure am, yeah.
Thank you.
Congratulations to everyone.
Thank you.
Um, so this is a public hearing on a community, community development block grant application. The community, Maryland Community Development Block Grant Program is a federally funded program to assist county and municipal governments with activities directed toward neighborhood revitalization, housing opportunities, economic development, and improved public facilities and services. This state provides the CDBG funds primarily as gap funding for projects selected by jurisdictions to meet their needs. The primary objectives of the Maryland CDBG program are to provide decent housing and necessary supporting infrastructure, to preserve and develop viable communities through the expansion of economic opportunities, and to meet the critical needs of Maryland communities. The community development block grant program funded projects must be for eligible activities under program regulations and must meet one of three national objectives. Benefits to persons of low and moderate income, eliminate slum and blight, or meet an urgent need of recent origin that threatens public health and safety. Eligible projects generally fall into three types. Housing, public facilities such as water, sewer, streets, childcare, senior, or community centers and shelters, and economic development projects. This state, uh, received the, for fiscal year 2019, uh, the state was allocated $7.7 million for this program statewide. Uh, the town of Elton is, uh, will be requesting $800,000 in funding assistance for a neighborhood community center to be built at 121 Stockton Street. Um, the pla, I have smaller versions of the plan, but the plan is up here. And it shows a 19,840 square foot building with associated parking, with access from Stockton Street. Uh, and I believe it will also be, uh, from Booth Street through the...
At some point in the future.
At some point in the future. Um, so, the, do you want to read the resolution now, or?
No, we'll read it.
Okay. All right, um, so that's the, the grant request, the project is expected to cost about $3.5 million. We also have a grant application in with the Strategic Demolition Grant Fund for $500,000 to assist us with development of this project.
And, and I, I just wanted to, uh, comment that, once again, this is, uh, a concept on paper, the way it looks. So when, if anyone takes a look at it, um, as we move forward in this pro, uh, process, there'll be, uh, I'm sure there'll be 15 different interior designs of this building. So, but the footprint is pretty much where we're at, what we should be looking at here with the road access in and out. Is that correct in?
Yes.
In thinking there. But it's, uh, hopefully, uh, if we can get this submitted and, uh, we're fortunate enough to get that grant opportunity along with the $500,000, and the $500,000 that we've already put aside, uh, to fund this project, we were going to borrow money from either our water side or sewer side.
Sewer.
Sewer side, and, uh, we would pay ourselves back, the town of Elton would self-fund this, and we would pay ourselves back at whatever determined interest rate this board decides. So financially, from the building and construction, construction of this building, the goal is it won't have any financial impact to the residents of the town uh, as far as increasing, uh, any additional real estate tax or so forth. So, does the board have any questions or comments in regards to the building that we're removing? Okay, this is a public hearing, yes ma'am, please state your, stand up, state your name and your address and it's, uh, you can make any comment you like, we'll do our best to answer.
Hi, it's Margaret West, uh, in Elton. Uh, is this building already there, or you're building a new one?
It would be new construction.
Why? We have Gilpin Manor, Gilpin Elementary that's going to be torn down. Aren't we wasting a lot of useful buildings to build new ones? It does, it seems like you already have that facility there. Gilpin Manor, it's already got everything you need in it. Can't you just put that money to cleaning it up rather than starting a home new?
Well, the, the, well, I'll try to answer them as I can go here. The, uh, Gilpin Manor is owned by the Cecil County School Board, who was owned by the county commissioners. Uh, the town of Elton, we don't regulate our schools or have any access to that property. But I know in the plan for Gilpin Manor, they are demolishing it because they built a new and they need it for the additional parking, uh, for the, uh, for the site that they're buil, currently building now. But your, uh, your input is well taken, uh, we're, uh, this has been discussed, I think, since, uh, 2000, 2003, uh, a community center, and we finally were able to put the funding together to try to move forward with this. Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say? Yes, sir, stand on up and tell us your name and address.
I'm Giblin, 214 North Street. I have the three topics I should stress tonight.
Mr. Giblin, if you could do it directly in regards to the community center? Uh, if you want...
Oh, it's a, it's a Elton cruise.
Yes, oh, perfect. Yeah, do you want to?
I'll wait to the end.
Okay, perfect.
Tell me to gun.
Yes, you jumped, you jumped a gun, but we'll hear you a little bit later. Anyone else have anything to say about the community center? Seeing none, this, uh, public hearing is closed at 7:12. Thank you. All right, uh, resolution R 7-2018, supporting the CDBG application regarding the town of Elton community center project. I don't think you need to read the, it was what you had talked about, or do you need to read that resolution? Lou, do you need to read that resolution?
No, you just recognized that it's to support the CDBG grant for the neighborhood community center and then ask for a vote to accept it.
Do we have a motion to approve?
To rules.
Second.
And a second, any discussion in regards to sport letter? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Lou, town administrators report.
Lou, could you pull that mic up to your, hey, you, sir?
Oh, my God. Be that gum we got there. Now, I, I would like to state that Lou was absent from our last, uh, town meeting and probably the first one he's missed in, uh, several years. And I had to read these in introduction, I just want to let you know, I was the, uh, introducer of these, uh, ordinances.
Louis, before you start, tilt that thing back down, you pulled away from, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, the, uh, ordinance 7-2018 was introduced by the mayor on the 16th of May and is, uh, subject to adoption tonight. This, uh, this ordinance deals with the code of the town of Elton, chapter 1304, uh, major facility charges and, and things of that nature. But what, uh, what's being amended tonight is a section of this, of this particular ordinance that waives the front foot assessment charges applied to new and existing residential development that'll run to August 31st, 2019, consistent with the waiver provided for the major facility charges. I would recommend that the board adopts ordinance 7-2018, extending the waiver to, uh, front foot assessment for new and existing residential development.
We have a motion to approve ordinance 7-2018 waiver of the front foot assessment fees.
So, new?
Second.
A motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next I have is ordinance 8, general penalty. This, uh, deals with, uh, chapter one, chapter, I mean, I'm sorry, title one, chapter one, 208, general penalty. Uh, in this particular ordinance, uh, its amendment applies to the amount of money that a fine can be charged based on the recommendation of council. The fine, uh, may not exceed $1,000, which is provided by state law for any single initial violation of this section. And, uh, any $1,000 fine for each repeat or continuing violation. Also, this ordinance provides the, the enforcement of it for the building official or his or her agents that are authorized by the board of commissioners to enforce the code and issue citations for any infraction. So I would recommend that the board adopt ordinance 8-2018.
We have a motion to approve ordinance 8-2018. Second motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, next ordinance is ordinance 9-2018 dealing with peddling and soliciting... Next ordinance is ordinance 9-2018, dealing with peddling and soliciting. There's a number of changes in this particular ordinance which are outlined since it's being introduced tonight rather than being adopted. Under one section, license required, the word "hawker" is struck and "peddler" shall remain, and it's a license issued by the town of Elton. I don't know where the term "hawker" came from, but we changed, we eliminated that and just used "peddler," because peddler is defined under the ordinance rather than "hawker." Under restriction on peddling in public places, I'll read, "No peddler shall sell or offer for sale any goods, commodities, foodstuffs, merchandise, products, or services on any street sidewalk, parking lot, or other public place unless issued a license, do so by the town of Elton, and said peddler's license specifies that peddling shall be in such public places permitted there under." In other words, if we issue a license, they can't peddle unless they have a license, and they have to be in a specific location that we've permitted to be. Additionally, under Section Paragraph B, the words are added, "Where a license has been issued to a peddler by the town of Elton, no peddler shall be permitted to display, sell, or otherwise offer direct or indirect sale, or on any street sidewalk, parking lot, or other public place during an event permitted by, sponsored by, or organized by the town of Elton unless you issue a license to do so by the town." In other words, people can't just set up a station when they're having special events, for example, the Fall Fest or some things like that, unless they're having a specific permit from the town. Additionally, fees are being changed from $50 annually to $100. The fee for a six-month license has changed from 25 to 50, and the fee for a daily license has changed from $5 to $25. A violation of this particular ordinance would include a fine of $100. Since the only other changes that are made at the end on the regulations affected by the laws that could affect this ordinance would be laws affecting, I mean, legislated by the United States, state of Maryland, county, or the town, that would be in conflict with any of these regulations. I doubt if it would be, but it's in our ordinance anyway. And a violation of the penalty for civil infraction may not exceed the amount of $1,000. I would recommend the board accept for introduction ordinance 9-2018.
Do we have a motion to approve, or for adoption, ordinance 9-2018?
Second.
And a second, any discussion?
Yes. I'd like to see if we can, see how this works. We're going to have to amend that somehow for churches when they have, like, fish fries and stuff like that. There's certain events that are taking place through the community, when, I use churches as an example, organizations have certain things, we may want to try to put something in there to cover those events.
If they don't need a church event, they wouldn't require any permits or anything because they're on private property.
What would happen if the...
This is only to sell on public property.
If one of our town events wanted to sell water, would they have to apply for the permit?
If they sold it for a profit in a public place, they'd have to have a peddler's permit. If they gave it away, it would need a permit, but if they do it for profit, it would be a peddler. It would need the peddlers.
Well, luckily, this is for introduction, and we'll...
Yeah, it's just for introduction, but it only deals with peddling in public places, not in private property, so any private person can do whatever they want to do.
Very good. Let's digest that. If there's anything else prior to the next meeting, we can make this amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries for introduction.
The next item I have is an easement. This is an easement prepared by council. It deals with a property adjacent to the entrance to the Neighborhood Service Center on Stockton Street, specifically with Mr. Philip Creer, who owns the property 119 adjacent to our entry to the Neighborhood Service Center. I mean, I'm sorry, Neighborhood Community Center. The county sold us the land, and it has a 40-foot wide easement from, I mean, a 40-foot wide right-of-way from Stockton Street to our site. We don't need 40 feet, we only need 30 feet in order to have the lanes and sidewalks in place. Rather than a conflict with Mr. Creer and his adjacent property, we decided to grant him 10-foot easement on that property, which will still allow us plenty of room for a 5-foot sidewalk, and two 12-foot lanes, curbs, and gutters, and everything we need to access it. Council prepared this, and we had met with Mr. Creer and his council, and I would recommend that the board grant this 10-foot easement on the property, the entrance next to 119 Stockton Street in Elton.
We have a motion to approve the easement. We have a look at it in a second. Any discussion on this easement? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Last thing I have is a speed hump installation recommendation. We had citizens come to our town meeting, I think two meetings ago, something like that, and requested speed humps on the 100 block, or in the 100 block of Friendship Road. We pursuant to that, we issued a citizen survey, we mailed out 43 letters, and we received 13 back, which is not unusual. A lot of people don't respond to surveys, but of the 13 back, 10 were in favor of the speed humps, and three were against. According to our policy, if you don't vote, you don't count, so those 13 votes did count, and the majority of the votes were in favor of speed humps. Consequently, I asked Mr. Hanley to evaluate these 100 block of Friendship Road, and it will run from Mitchell Street up to Lucas Lane, and there will be three speed humps installed on that street based upon their, the way we set up speed humps with respect to intersections and everything. I would need the board's authority to proceed. I think additionally, Mr. Hanley wants to stop intersection, at the intersection of Clark and Friendship Road?
Yes.
Okay, would that be an always stop?
Yes, that'd be always stop.
Okay, there's three intersecting roads there, would be an always stop. The traffic calming effects of speed humps in conjunction with those stop controls on this street between Mitchell and Lucas Lane should address speeding. Won't guarantee it, but it's a measure of enhancing public safety on that street, and I would recommend that the board authorize us to proceed.
We have a motion to move forward with the speed hump installation on the 100 block of Friendship Road.
Second.
Any discussion? I guess the only comments I have is that I certainly, I hate speed humps, but I think they're necessary when we have residents come in and they want to calm that traffic down. I live right there at the corner of Hermitage and Friendship, and I can tell you, I can look to my right, and I don't see anyone, but as soon as I start to turn, I don't know where they come from so fast around that turn. They must be not even stopping or speeding through there, who knows? But it's a necessary, and hopefully it'll save, save a life, so those are my comments. Anyone else have anything to say? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That completes the items on my agenda.
Very good. Thanks, Lou. The, I wanted to give the board a little bit of an update. I met with staff today, we met with L.B. Water, and in regards to the census, water meters, and I have to say that Dan Hanley at Public Works gave us a progress report on where the town staff or our own workers have been installing the new water meters through several neighborhoods, and quite frankly, going into this, I would have been supportive of hiring out another entity to do a turnkey operation, and let's get this thing done. But talking with staff today and looking at the savings that I truly believe that this is going to save to our residents, and I think they're moving along very well, I think they've worked all the little bumps out. So, I guess, I'm not, I guess I can make a recommendation to say that, Dan, I'd like for you to continue to move in the direction you're going. It's going to take a little bit longer than the six-month project, but I believe that we can get this thing done with a little bit of effort, and we could probably be done with the whole town in 18 to 24 months is the target number that we're looking at, and it would be, we are, we'd probably be in the smart meter business, and I think it's a, it's going to be a pretty good savings based on the calculations, some of the calculations we saw today. So I wanted to give the board an update on that, because if you, we had met with Moneywell, we had met with Ferguson, I'm trying to think who else we met with. We met with quite a few different agencies, and I think that our own labor is going to be the right thing for us to do, and I think that they're very capable of handling it. With that, Mary Jo, you're on.
I just wanted to mention the trees downtown. I mentioned it to the chief. With the cameras in place, there's a couple cameras in particular, you really can't see anything, so we've got to think about something. So, with the money invested in those cameras, we don't want branches in the way of seeing something that they need to see.
I think the chief is going to look and determine all those things, but I'm the cameras.
Okay, perfect. And I think that's all I have tonight.
I have nothing, sir.
Charles?
My friend.
Yes, sir.
In two weeks, we will meet the candidates that receive awards from the town of Elton. They had their awards assembled last Thursday. Ironically, Rob was there too, because he gave out the scholarship on behalf of the athletes.
The Dunk Neck Athletic Association.
So in two weeks, we'll meet them. Also, when we go to our MML quarterly meeting, we have the 50-50 roundtable, and that money is used to allow a scholarship, $500, to a Harper County student, a Cecil County student. Unfortunately, Dan's son was the recipient of the Cecil County Scholarship. Dan's son's bright.
I'm certain.
The Memorial Day Parade, it went well, and thanks for the opportunity to share in that. Chief, thank you for the shirts that we will be wearing. Of course, you have seen them.
Yeah.
You wore Rob one. And we appreciate that. Also, I sent some pictures out today, just brief. I'm Mary Jo, Earl, Rob, and Jean, I didn't have your number at the time, but down at 118, in that area, the sidewalk was blocked because there were two ladies sitting out there with chairs, the children out there playing, and I think that needs to be taken into consideration, particularly with people walking down the street. They should not have to walk out of the street, nor is it inviting somebody who's visiting the town, so I don't know the best way to work that out. I just bring that to your attention and see what we can do about that. Down there in front of where Stanley's and the water shop are. No, sir, if we plan to have a sidewalk sitting out there, but then again, that will allow for people, at least have a pair, to get by in their case, because it's blocked. And that's it, Rob.
Thank you. I was going to, Charlie did an excellent job representing the town of Elton, giving out the two scholarships, and I didn't want to put him on the spot, but I was going to ask Charlie if he was going to allow me to help him coach, because he was the coach of the year again. I mean, I was expecting it now. But Charlie did, I tell you, he represented the town of Elton. He was fantastic, and it's great when you have a well-respected person in the community handing out a scholarship like that. He was, keep the love. Mr. Giblin, strike. Jean?
Chief, I want to thank you too for the shirt that we're wearing, and the only thing I had was, I was glad to see your correspondence with the hospital for a four-way stop. When will that be done?
The four-way stop at the hospital.
Should be said for March.
They put signs up, and we have, we have a disability tool, the, you know, logans. And actually, this would be good, Katie, it'd be great for you to maybe do an article about it. We're doing a four-way stop at...
I was saying you earlier.
You got it?
Oh, yeah, four-way stop now.
Okay. Yeah, it's probably something that we should have discussed, but we did discuss it in the workshop when we had the hospital here, but we're going to put a four-way stop at the intersection of...
High and Singlerly.
High and Singlerly.
And we'll have lots of signage, right? Because a lot of people aren't going to be expecting that, that live, you know...
Well, we'll have, besides, we're going to cut back about 40 feet, curb in front of where the urgent care is, to allow access to the vision. We'll put cones out as a thing, so it'll be stop bars painted on the road, and unless people are completely blind, you should be able to see all this.
Okay.
And we'll have the, I mean, the police department there to keep an eye on it for a while.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
And I want to mention that we did try out our new speaker system for Memorial Day, and I thought it went very, very well, which was fantastic. This is the time of the meeting. We open up the floor for the public to give comment. Mr. Giblin, come on down. I know you had three items for us.
Well, let's cut it down to two. I promised to wait till the end of the meeting.
But I got you on first.
Okay. The first item is ICE for cell phones. I don't know if anybody's ever heard before. It's a very big program in England and Australia, I understand, where people, and their cell phones are on the list, where firefighters, paramedics, and police, if somebody's in trouble or unconscious, they can scroll down and see ICE in case of emergency, right? And they know to call that person. Of course, the phone has to be on and unlocked, and just wondering, you know, how much merit there is to that? It's a program that could be started in the school system in the fall, and would pass on to the parents. And maybe there could be a reward system, you know, free candy bars on the street if anybody has ICE on their phone. So my question to Chief Donnelly is, do you think that an ICE program would have any merit? Is it worth doing? I don't know.
I think many people already have it on their phone.
Well, the two of your officers, Lasasa and Salisbury, gave a safety presentation to the Moore Street residents, and I'd like to thank you for that, and I like to ask questions, and I asked them if they saw ICE was a good idea. They gave a fantastic presentation, by the way, and thank you again to Elton Police Department. I asked them if ICE would be a good idea, and they hadn't heard of it before. And like I said, it's a program, you know, that could be started in schools, and it's just something that, you know, might help the paramedics and firefighters and police, you know, something, you know, for the town council and the police department, you know, to consider.
We'll take a look at that. Thank you.
The second one, I talked a little bit about the pedestrian bridge over the Big Elk on Delaware Avenue at the last meeting, and the young fellow in the back row in the aisle told me it's been going on now for three years. I'm just, I have three questions. One, is there a target date that you'd like to see the pedestrian bridge completed by? Number two, has it been budgeted? And number three, are there any updates at this time?
Well, I'd first like to say, the young man in the back was incorrect. We've actually been working on this since 1996 or 1997, and it's finally, about three years ago, was actually approved, and there was funding from the state, but my understanding was that once they started doing the engineering, the amount of displacement of water, even though it was put directly onto the side of the bridge, it was going to change the flow of the water one one-hundredth of an inch.
The flood elevation.
The flood elevation.
And because of the change in flood... And because of the change in flood elevation, the FEMA would not permit the structure to be placed, so we had to have a CLOMAR, it's called a Conditional Letter of Map Revision, and we paid our engineers a, a healthy sum of money to pursue that, and they did obtain it, and we sent that to the state highway, and, uh, I'm in communication with them from time to time, copying the board, and as soon as they can put that back into the planning phase, uh, they'll complete the plan, and then it'll go into what's called a construction funding phase, and it'll, it'll be competitive with other projects throughout the state, but right now, I think it's pretty destined to go back into the planning.
Okay, so there is a roadmap, but to finally get it done at some point.
I think we're closer, well, we thought we had it several years ago, but I feel after we played, paid the extortion money, quite frankly, to, uh, uh, I, I think, uh, we've got the okay from them, and now Lou has been in contact with the state highway, getting it back into the planning and the funding side. So fingers crossed, I think a little lobbying from our board with our legislators, I think that that, that is a, a project that could happen.
By the end of the year, be too soon.
I think the end of the year would be very aggressive based on how slow we move as government, but I would say that, uh, this time next year, I'll be upset if we don't have it.
Fantastic. Thank you, good sir.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say this evening?
Yeah.
Seeing none, this meeting's adjourned.